Thank you everyone for coming to the work session tonight. This is a very important meeting and just wanted to say welcome and I appreciate the board members making effort to be here this evening. And I think we're going to have a couple more coming as time moves on. I saw Mr. Rogers coming to the parking lot just a second ago, so we'll go ahead and get started, Dr. Bill.
Mr. Francis, meeting board, let me begin by just thanking you for your support and the communication that we have had with you since last Saturday evening. Governor Cooper announced in a press conference that public schools in North Carolina would be closing for at least two weeks. Before we go through the agenda, I want to just talk to you a little bit about how proud I am of our school system. We had a number of individual teachers, principals, and schools doing preemptive planning for the press conference. We had done some preemptive planning within our office in terms of upgrading schedules for cleaning, should we actually be in school for distribution of food. That will be to make possible in the state and most certainly for providing educational resources. We did a lot of work on Saturday. We had a three-hour meeting in office on Sunday afternoon. We shared that with you, that we were going to have it with you. Information at least two board members came so they could participate in that conversation and also have better insight into what was going on. So we have just done a whole lot in a very short period of time. I'm very proud of our employees. They have risen to the occasion without question. Today, I and several of our system level staff had an opportunity to go out to schools and it was amazing. We had people delivering supplies and materials, people sharing devices, people trying to comfort and reassure each other and through...
You're not picking me up?
Brad?
Can you hear me now? Okay. I'll back up just a little bit for the transcript if that's okay. But we did a lot of preempting planning since Saturday when the governor closed schools for at least two weeks. We had a lot of pre-planning by teachers and principals and on the central office side, on our side, we did some planning last week thinking that this might occur. We did planning on cleaning of facilities. We did planning on providing educational supplies and activities for students. And we also did some planning on the distribution of meals and sharing electronic devices. I am very proud of our people. Our employees have risen to the occasion. Today, I and several other of the central level staff had the opportunity to go out to several of the schools and see them in action. It was just phenomenal. They were providing information and devices and food, supplies and materials for students and their families. Through 5:00 PM today, they had provided over 2,200 meals for students. They had also distributed hundreds of educational activities in paper and also in a digital format. And they had loaned students 948 Chromebooks or other digital devices. This work is continuing as we speak. Several schools, knowing that parents work during the day and might not be able to come during the day, are actually having activities tonight where they're sharing information and providing resources to the community. And we expect this initial startup of learning away from school to continue through the day tomorrow. Okay? After that, I think we will be pretty close to where we need to be with what is by all accounts a real transformation of instruction for Haywood County schools and I imagine other parts of the state. So tonight, what we want to do is bring you up to date on meetings that we've had with principals and information that we have asked them to share with school staff. We will talk about some things that are yet to come beyond our two-week period. Many of those are decisions that would be made at the state level, but some of those are things that we may have to make as a board, board administrative staff. And then at the end, we'll just talk about anything we feel like we need to talk about to help our students and staff. Just a couple other comments. In crisis situations like this, I think you can really see the true character of people. I want you to know that we have great people. They care about children learning. They care about children eating. Few of them have worked at the district level, but even without that experience, many of them really understand that we are working to put supports in place first for our students. And we think that will come to fruition pretty soon, in a day or two. And then as soon as that is in place and we're assured that students can get access to food and good learning opportunities, we will turn our attention to our employees and make sure that we make adjustments for them in terms of their work schedules or other things that we can do. There's been a lot of conversation about people working at home. That's a new and very uncomfortable concept for most public school systems, but that is something we've already considered and we'll be talking about with our people a little later this week when we see that all the student stuff is in place. Unfortunately, most of our non-certified people, people who do not hold a teaching license, cannot work from home. They have to be on-site to do their work, to cook food, to clean buildings, to transport supplies, to transport food. So we will be working with them to provide every reasonable work experience that we can so that they can have gainful employment and pay during this crisis situation. I plan to send out a communication after our meeting tonight that will contain some of this information as well as other things that we talk about tonight. And I think we just need to remember everyone who's worked very, very hard and think about people who are going to continue to work to make things as good as we can for our students and staff. So excuse that long introduction. I think it's a very unique time and we need to say as much about that as we could. The first person, yes sir?
Can I interrupt you just a minute?
Yes, sir.
I want to add just a little bit to what you said about the employees. I think our central office staff has done an amazing job too in the leadership position and everything relevant and I'd like to thank y'all for everything y'all have done.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Henson. There is plenty of credit to go around. Certainly everyone here has worked very hard. Allison Francis did some emergency paperwork over the weekend that we had to have in place before we could do the food distribution. She's been working with Dr. Putnam. Mrs. Barker did some work with teachers ahead of time. Mark Shepherd has been working with bus drivers on some plans that are forthcoming. And so there's a lot of praise to go around and I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Henson. We have a lot of people doing a lot of very important work. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam. He can talk about food distributions and other items related to support services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we began distributing food today from 11:00 to 1:00. And any child from age one to 18 was eligible for a meal. In the meal bag was both a breakfast and a lunch item. We offered those at Bethel Elementary, Clyde Elementary, Hazelwood Elementary, Jonathan Valley Elementary, Junalusk Elementary, Meadow Brook Elementary, North Canton Elementary, and Waynesville Middle. Reason these sites were selected is because they offer summer feeding programs. And when we were developing these plans, those were the only eligible schools that had previously offered summer feeding programs. So that's why those sites were selected. With that said, it also provided a pretty good coverage map. So those schools that were excluded though, I didn't want you to think that it happened arbitrarily. So that began today, as Dr. Nolte said, 2,200 meals, over 2,200 meals. We're extremely pleased with the efforts of our cafeteria staff. Allison Francis, our child nutrition director being proactive and had actually begun the paperwork before the press conference had actually concluded with the governor. So very pleased there. We do have plans to further our efforts to put food in kids' hands via delivery. We don't want to detail those plans too much or talk about them too much because we fear the confusion it may create on the part of students and parents expecting a delivery and even the thought or the hearing of that, they might be standing at a bus stop expecting the bus to come by and drop it off and that put them in harm's way. So we do have a fully, complete and detailed plan ready to go in the very near future, but we're withholding those details until we stop using distribution sites. So that's kind of where we are. I'm going to provide y'all with the messages sent out to staff and students and parents so that you'll have those and if you field calls, you'll be able to direct them to the locations they need to be at, at the time they need to be at. You'll be advised. The other thing, we have worked extremely hard and I appreciate Dr. Nolte's leadership. A lot of times when you are the main lead, you don't get a lot of credit, but he has been very proactive in his encouragement to get as many folks in gainful employment as possible. We have had bus drivers in, near to, if not exactly, their bus route time, engaged in meaningful work. We haven't created work. It was work that was needed in implementing this plan. We needed custodians to come in and help plan for a delivery via bus. They know the routes intimately and far better than I. And so we had them in in the planning process. We also had to get the buses ready for delivery, making sure they were clean. Everything's been disinfected. Everything swept out and trash emptied. And so they've been engaged in that well. And they will also assist at a designated time with making calls to students, hey, we'll be coming your way. Expect us to be delivering food to your home. So they'll be engaged in that as well. And as for our child nutrition folks, it's been a regular day, normal to their hours, if not more, just because of the massive lift that it's been to have enough meals ready. And they've done just a remarkable job. I can't say enough about those folks. If you think about the unknown, how many do you need? How many will actually show up? That's a pretty daunting task to try to get your head wrapped around exactly how many meals will you need. Can't have too much, it may spoil. Can't have too little, someone might go without. And I can tell you that everybody that come through these sites was provided a meal for as many students as they, or children one to 18, as they asked for meals for. So it's been a great thing. Kind of to echo Dr. Nolte, I appreciate the work of Mark Shepherd and Allison Francis, our cafeteria managers, our cafeteria staff, our bus drivers. They've done just a fantastic job. And I don't want to exclude maintenance. Their role has become less in the implementation of feeding simply because we're not cleaning. The COVID-19 virus is not present. We've not had that positive case in the school, but we're on the ready should it show its ugly head. So maintenance has begun their, they've maintained their normal routine and they're on the ready should COVID-19 rear its ugly head. And they've actually moved to some summer projects. For those summer projects that we already have materials on hand, they are working on some of those, trying to get us ahead and get caught up. We will also seek opportunities for folks who are without work or might lose time and employment. We're looking, if need be, to utilize them with the maintenance department if need be. Again, we can get caught up. We're on backlog in some areas, mainly painting, so we can put those folks to work. So again, just trying to keep everybody working, getting the kids fed, and we plan to expand that in the very near future. Any questions for me?
Are y'all pulling cafeteria staff like from Pesca and Tusco where you're not feeding to help? Are they working there too? Or are they just...
Yes, sir.
At their own school?
They are actually bagging lunches and breakfasts as if they were going to have folks show up at their school, but they're carrying them to, or they're working in these sites. So they know how many students typically eat. They're familiar with their kids, so we're using them at these sites. Yes, sir. Good question.
Again, without sharing information that would confuse people because the last thing we want people to do is to prepare for something that will happen a few days from now, not something that's happening right now. The second-level plan that Dr. Putnam and his staff has put together will expand in a couple ways, not only delivery, but in sites. And I don't want to be any more specific than that because I don't want people showing up at the wrong place until we're ready. But he and other people in support services have really created a two-phase approach to food delivery and phase two will be larger and more comprehensive.
I do have a question. Don't take this the wrong way. It's just how my mind's working right now. It's not a matter of if. We're going to have a case of coronavirus in Haywood County. I know people that's on quarantine as we speak in Haywood County because they've been exposed in some way, shape, or form as a result of it. What if? And nobody likes to play this game, but what if we have a child nutrition worker that comes down with coronavirus? Do we have a way to track the meals they prep? How do we notify the people? And what is the liability on the flip side of this thing? Like I said, it's, I don't want to be the dark cloud in the room, but it's not a matter of will we? It's when?
Yeah. We will certainly, I'll come back to your question. We will certainly talk more about people who have infections. I have spoken with the public health director, the public health nursing supervisor about three or four situations involving employees. In every instance thus far, when we have described the situation with the employee, the public health folks have told us, you don't need to worry about that one, but let us know if anything changes there. So we concur. We think it is very likely that we will have a case in Haywood County and probably many cases. I think the difficulty in tracking COVID-19 as we understand it is that it's very difficult to track anywhere in the world. We will know which meals are produced at which school. It'll be easier to track when we go to phase two of our program.
It's not hard to track. I mean, if you have an infected employee, every meal becomes suspect.
It does, but...
Every person affected gets quarantined.
That's correct. But we also may have infections that occur from people who have no symptoms at all and we may not...
That's the scary side.
That is the scary side of it. And what we are doing, we'll talk a little bit more about that when Jason speaks in a moment, but what we are doing there is we are relying on medical professionals to advise us because we're not medical professionals.
But what are medical professionals advising? Right now, they're shutting down restaurants, bars, all of these other places. They're shutting down assemblies of more than 50 people in a building. How many schools do we have less than 50 people in a building?
Well, what they're telling us is that we do not need to have groups of 10 or more working together. I mean, that's, we have nine less than 10 there, distance apart, six feet apart, you can have another group. What we have been advised to do, and we said this very clearly to principals, is when you're doing the work that you have going on right now, you need to make sure that your grade levels are working together and your departments are working together. And I think the specific example I gave was if you work at one of the high schools, you don't need someone who goes to A building, B building, C building, D building, E building, F building. Obviously, you'll need to work in your area and you'll need to go to the office. Once we have the supports in place to make sure our students don't miss much, they will miss some. What we're doing is not the same as direct instruction from a qualified person. Once we have those supports in place, then I think we can change employee schedules, but I think we're a few days away from that.
Well, I know when I read the communication earlier today that this was considered an instructional closure versus an infectious disease closure. That's a bunch of hard wash.
That's the direction we received in the webinar from two state offices. We did not make any of that up, none of it.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And I'm not fussing at you.
Yeah.
I'm fussing at the system because that's not accurate. It's not like a snow day. I mean, if it weren't for coronavirus, we'd be going to school. Right?
I believe...
If it weren't shutting down the system.
I believe that. I believe we would be in school. And I went on record publicly before...
But what's shutting down the system?
What is shutting down the system right now? You would probably need to talk to the governor for his specific reasons. I went on...
It's coronavirus.
Yeah. I went on record earlier saying that I probably would not have done it as quickly here as other places, but when it was done, it was done. And then we felt like we needed to join in the state directives.
Well, and then the other thing about this is you've got, not only have you got that, and I applaud all the efforts. Listen, I'm the biggest cheerleader we've got. But one of the most valuable assets of this community is our teachers. If we continue to fit them in a place to where we could, we could, let's just play a game with me for a minute. We get all this stuff done and then 14 days from now, we got a teacher at Jonathan Valley comes down with COVID-19.
Well...
Now we've quarantined every other teacher.
Well, maybe not. If that teacher was...
If they went to the bathroom?
If they were on the other hallway. I don't like playing what ifs either and I frequently tell the media that I don't like to do that. If we...
The whole thing is a what if.
If we had sent all the teachers home Monday when school closed on Saturday, we would not be providing the kind of quality education that we can provide now and it will be even better in just a day or two. And like I said earlier, we will certainly make adjustments for staff, but I was trying to take care of student food needs and instructional needs first.
I understand all that. I understand the goal behind everything. It's, I just don't want to sit here three weeks from now and I say, man, if we'd have shut down and let teachers work from home like Gansy and Asheville City and Jackson County, you know, some of the other systems are doing, and not worried over, they were going to treat us like a snow day. And I know that's not you. Don't jump in front of the bullet. The bullet's getting shot somewhere else. We could end up furthering this thing rather than driving it down, rather than flattening the bales, the buzzword right now, flat flattening the curve. Right now, we could very easily bump this thing out. If we had a case today, right now, we're shut down for at least two weeks. If we had a case today in one of our schools, there's a good chance a lot of them are going to get quarantined for 14 days. Anybody that had contact with that person will get quarantined for 14 days. So we could end up with a school closed for another 14 days on top of what we've already... You see what I'm saying?
I do. I do think that would be similar though to allowing them to work at home, which is something we'll be able to do as soon as we get the student supports in place. And I know they're not the same. I know they're not. And I just felt like our first commitment was to our students and then very close to that was working with staff. And some of our people will never be able to go home if they're going to earn a penny. So even when we do allow some employee groups to go home, many...
Unless they pass the deal in the Senate.
Well, I hope that they...
Probably on the floor for...
Right.
To take care of those kinds of lack of employment opportunities.
I understand that is there, but they made it very clear to us today in the webinar that none of that was guaranteed.
Well, see, that's the problem though, Dr. Bill. They're talking out both sides of their mouth. You know, this should have never been a state-level decision.
Agreed. I think I put myself out on a limb for that a week or so ago.
We should have boiled this thing down to where...
Agreed.
Once we knew.
Right.
And then we could react. But the way everything's playing out, and I hope, I hope I'm completely wrong about this. I want to be, this one time I want to be wrong, but...
Just one time.
If this thing gets out of hand, the school year's going to be gone. How many more weeks of school is there left?
There are less than 10.
And we know two of them shot already, best-case scenario.
Well, and what we're trying to do is operate on what we know right now. We do not know what the governor's going to do. We do not know if we will have control over our own spring break or other things that we'll talk about a little bit more in just a moment.
Now, let me, like Jackson County and Asheville City that you're talking about, they're already one-to-one, correct? So they have a little bit more flexibility than what we do since we are not at that stage of the game, correct?
I'd have to ask them if they're one-to-one. I don't believe they are. I understood, and again, I'm going on memory with another superintendent, I understood that Jackson was in upper...
Upper grade, yeah.
Upper grades.
Well, regardless whether one-to-one or not, that's not going to help the spread That'll have nothing to do with the spread of disease.
Yeah.
And I know we want to, listen, I want to salvage baseball season and softball season and the prom and graduate, I want to salvage all that. But, you know, it's a, it's almost a gamble on what you do, what we do. Because, you know, one, we want to protect the students, absolutely, but we also got to protect the teachers. Because if we don't protect the teachers, there's nobody, there's going to be nobody to teach the students when they do come back. And you just end up in this cyclone.
I understand it. I understand it. And I take responsibility for it if it doesn't go well. I applied the best rationale that I could, given the circumstances.
Well, I guess my biggest beef is over the whole infectious versus instructional, because that's not, that's not the truth.
Yeah. Their, their language, I can assure you, we didn't make that up.
Like I said, don't jump in front of the bullet. I ain't shooting at you. But regardless, we've got to be, we've got to use extreme caution. And I know you are. I don't know that people sending down memos and doing webinars are.
Yeah, we're really being cautious. I had a long conversation with principals about not, and I think the words I used in the written information that I gained, gave to them or said to, excuse me, in the information I said to them, is that we should not be doing anything to promote, encourage, or participate in activities that are contrary to the rules of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association or to the rules we had in place for banning after-school groups. And I even gave an example of, you know, the state said that we couldn't play ball games, but we couldn't practice too. You know, that meant cross-country, cross-country. We need to be very careful, and we need to make sure that we're not having one-on-one sessions with coaches and athletes because that's just as dangerous as having them all together. So, we are really, really trying to be careful. I shared information with principals, telling them that they needed to avoid at all cost any of our employees gathering students together in groups of 10 or more at locations to have pseudo-school-like activities because that defeated the purpose of what was going on. So, we are really trying to be careful, and I probably, again, would have done this a little later in Haywood County, and, and we will certainly adjust staff schedules. I just wanted to make sure that we had it in really good shape before we did that because I felt like if we just let everybody work from home beginning Monday or today or maybe even tomorrow, it would be piecemeal at best for students. And if we do get to come back, and who knows what they'll do with state testing, we want our students to be as ready as they can be. I think a lot of that will be canceled, but just preparing for it should have occurred.
Again, going back to my pet peeve, infectious disease versus instructional. Let's, let's say the second-grade teacher at Jonathan Valley comes down with COVID-19, and she infects another teacher. Now, when she goes out, she's got to use up her workdays or his workdays or whomever. They're going to use up what they've got built up.
That, that's not, that's not accurate. If you are quarantined by the public health director, then your days, you do not use accumulated leave. And if you are assigned to work at home, you do not use accumulated leave. The only use of accumulated leave is right now, before we have a quarantine from public health or before we can adjust staff assignments.
If you're unable to come to work due to an illness, compromised immune system, childcare, any other reason you're required by the state, use your accumulated leave.
That's the state directive. That's not for anyone who has been made to be quarantined. That is not by, that is not for anyone whose doctor has said you will quarantine. If they are quarantined by the public health director, that does not apply. I'm talking about right now.
Currently, there is no approved state provision for leave with pay from the state other than accumulated leave.
That's currently, if you're quarantined, that's a different situation. It wasn't addressing quarantine situations in that communication.
Maybe needs to be added.
If, here's the example. If I had, if I'm 65 and I have diabetes, neither, have neither of those yet in place, and I say to you all, I'm 65, I have diabetes, I think my immune system is compromised, I don't need to come to work. You got to make me take leave or assign me to work at home, right?
Would that be the case if it was for infectious disease?
Well, but if there's no reason for me to believe that I have COVID-19, our public health folks have not yet said to us, and I've talked to them about numerous cases, that person needs to be quarantined immediately. And I have talked to them about a wide variety of cases, three or four times yesterday. I know it's confusing. It is confusing for us, and, and we tried to read the regulations and understanding. That directive was designed to help principals and teachers understand that right now, the state does consider these as mandatory workdays for us. And we can send people home, but if we do that prematurely, we're not going to do as well with students in the long run. And I think we will get to that point very, very soon. That, that communication does not speak about required quarantine situations for employees when they have been required to quarantine by public health.
Well, I'll hush because we're in a public setting.
I'm just, you know, I'm not trying to argue with you. This is a confusing thing, and I may not have communicated as well as I should, but we probably sent, you know, four or five messages in the last four or five days trying to keep people up to speed.
Would it help if, if our board sent something to Raleigh asking them to change that definition or reconsider the definition that they're using currently?
I, I think by the time you did that, our students will be up to speed and we'll be operating differently.
Okay.
You're welcome to do that. I think we're, we're passing out devices like tonight. We have other schools scheduled to do that tomorrow and provide instructional packets. I think by the end of tomorrow, we'll be able to look at employee assignments differently.
I know, I went to Unileuska today and with Kason to pick up his pack, and I was amazed at the amount of work in there, and he just started digging in on it.
Right.
I couldn't get into his crazy Chromebook because he's got some kind of password on the problem. But that's his own Chromebook. We'll fix it. But I was just amazed at how much work had been put together in a short order of time, and I, congratulations.
I follow that size. You just have to remember that epidemics and pandemics start on the coast and move their way to the middle.
Well.
We're not on the coast.
In the more populated areas, so.
How many cases do we have? Because I know when he started this, there was four.
Four in where?
North Carolina.
Yeah, we got, I've got it right here.
Forty.
I got it correct.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three as well.
One in Macon County is the closest one I know of.
Yeah, well, that was, that was from a New York person that was down here.
Well, Dr. Rogers is completely accurate.
We do have, we do have people quarantined.
We, we are, we are going in all likelihood to have a case here very soon. He's, he's accurate about that. I'm, I'm like, like, like Dr. Rogers, I, I am aware of situations where people are quarantined. I'm not aware of any folks who work in schools or any people who work in schools who've had direct contact with them. But I've talked to public health about a couple of situations where our school system person was there but not within a close distance, did not make personal contact with that person. So, I think you're right. We're going, we're going to have cases, and I suspect that we'll certainly adjust staff schedules. I'm just trying to make sure that, that we're ready to take care of students when we do that, and I think that's pretty soon.
Very good.
I think we'll have a completely different view of that this time tomorrow, and then we can communicate after that what we're thinking to, to staff people.
I guess, in conclusion, as soon as we get them teachers out of school, better off we'll be.
Agreed.
I'll leave it with that.
Good. Can I change the subject a little bit on the, on the devices and Chromebooks, et cetera, like that? How are we looking at like on supplies of those? And, you know, we got enough or do we want to? Let me, let, that's, that's actually the next thing that we talk to principals about, instruction in general. And let me turn it over to, and we can come back to any of these topics. We're here to have a work session so we can really talk about anything within this parameter. And I think the agenda is broad enough that we can talk about a lot of things. But let me turn it over to Jill. She worked with schools. She and Kim Jackson have been really working hard, giving principals all the information they needed for the checkout and tracking them, and she can give you, I think, some ideas in most cases of what our inventory looks like. And then there's some other work beyond that of funds that we're trying to seek to assist us further. So, I'll turn it over to Jill at this time. One other thing before you get started, Jill, let me back up then again. One thing for Trevor, on, on the food distribution, I have had questions being asked to me about what our communities can do, and I know we probably addressed that here a little later on as well tonight. Jenny's going to talk about that. I love that, okay. If we can just hold it for then, because my experience has been in situations like this, I was the person who stood before the school system in, in four public forums when we introduced AIDS education and we were starting to have our first AIDS cases. So, my experience is that when you have discussions like this, if you don't sort of check off one big box at a time, you don't ever finish the discussion. But we can, we're certainly willing to stay here as long as we need tonight to try to hear what your concerns are and answer questions for you. Well, my first thing back then, still to Trevor, is on the, and I know this is still in the works as far as the, the food distribution stuff like that, but you'd make a comment maybe when food, when distribution sites stop, but we're still, we'll probably have some distribution sites.
That is.
In conjunction with that.
That, that is correct.
Okay.
Probably more appropriately said, when that's our sole method of distributing food.
Right.
You know, when that ceases to be the sole method we're using to distribute food.
Yes, okay.
It'll, it'll expand. We, we will still have, we will always have sites.
Still have some sites available.
A good chance we'll have a whole lot more.
That's very true.
Okay. Again, just trying to.
That got that.
Kind of stay cheek and tongue on this.
I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah.
Clarified that way. Instead of when distribution stops, I thought.
No, no, wait a minute.
When sites stop, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, now, Mr. Jill, I'm sorry.
Chairman Francis, members of the board. Friday, met with our curriculum instruction staff, and we had been planning all week just for what ifs, and I, I felt strongly that we probably need to get some communication out over the weekend so we could definitely tell principals, you know, they might want to start planning, having no idea the governor was going to close school on Saturday. So, that ended up being a really good, you know, piece of information for them to have. I'm amazed that on yesterday, we met with them at 10 o'clock, and at the end of the day today, they have given out that many devices and that much work. And those of you that have kids in our school system, you've seen some of the quality assignments that are already out. I see you shaking your heads. Kennedy said today, so much for a pandemic, I'm working myself to death up here. So, she was really digging in. So, we will continue to adjust. We basically kind of went one-to-one in a matter of 48 hours, and I, I just can't tell you the caliber of people that we have in our school system that got all that together from our principals providing positive leadership to our teachers, making sure that these kids had books in their hands. And so, we are, we, we have a lot to be proud of in Haywood County. We started out, we are issuing Chromebooks for grades three through 12, and so, every student was able, different schools, I had asked them last Friday to develop a communication plan and a plan for distribution if we had to do that. And sure enough, on Monday, they've done it. You know, they did that yesterday, and today, we have a couple of schools that are going to roll theirs out tomorrow. And if those had to be updated, there were several things. You just can't send those Chromebooks home, and Kim Jackson and her staff have done a phenomenal job getting those ready. I reminded principals that those are bought, you know, in taxpayers' money, we got to give them in the hands of these kids. And so, they are now, and they're going to be able to use them, and the teachers have really done some pretty brilliant things already. So, with that being said, those, those communications are out there. We will know in the coming days the kids we haven't reached, and that's what I'm waiting for now, to give everyone a chance. So, if you're looking at a third-grade classroom, we will know who hasn't, who hasn't reached out, who hasn't responded to an email. These teachers are just doing a phenomenal job, so we can make sure they get the work they need and the support they need too. So, in the coming, next couple of days, we will definitely know that. We already know some of those. I'm just trying to reach out to them. We expected teachers, we do in schools anyway, expect them to have a week's worth of lesson plans as a minimum, so we asked them to go ahead and prepare that. So, they have got those up and online and activities for kids. Some teachers have them, they're just sending them out daily, but just to have that much planned, know when we're going into two weeks. So, we left that pretty open, but the expectation is that every teacher, regardless if you're teaching welding or English 2, then we'd have plans out there. And so, our CTE people have jumped in, and they're also putting activities for our kids. Our physical education teachers have put physical activities also. You saw that, Mr. Frank?
Yeah, Callie, when I brought home Callie's package, she's like, I have, this is more work than I do at school. And then she was flipping through it, and she's like, yeah, there's even assignments in here from the PE teacher that I got to complete. So, yeah.
So, we try, you know, we just want to make sure, some kids, you know, they want to see that, they love that too. So, anyway, we wanted to make sure the assignments were just as quality as possible. We've asked our teachers, you know, to not send home busy work, but just to make sure they're real high quality. I saw a video today that was just phenomenal. It was the Encore teachers at Bethel Middle had made a video for their kids, their students, all of them together. It was a really neat reminder of the things they need to do while they're out, and so, they've done some really creative pieces as of right now.
Let me, I think my mic's got, hello, I'll talk really loud. Let me interject and try to answer. There you go. Okay, got it, Kita. Let me interject and try to answer Mr. Roger's specific question. We talked with Kim Guffey prior to the meeting. We feel very comfortable that we have enough students that have their own devices combined with the devices that we have, that we will not need additional student devices. We are communicating with the Homewood or?
Dogwood.
Dogwood, excuse me, the Dogwood Trust and the Southwestern Commission about some device support possib, possibly for teachers. A lot of our teachers only have desktops, and so, we, we have entered into conversations with those two funding sources about things that might help teachers or other ways for us to expand digital service besides what people might have at home or what we might have if someone access digital service in one of our, our school parks. one of our, our school parking lots or near campus. So I think we're okay with student devices according to Kim, but we are working on some outside funding for other devices and services. Sorry, Jill.
Oh, no, that's fine. So just to answer your question, Mr. Rogers, we did have enough when we rolled this out. Kim had already told us we had enough for grades three through 12, just based on the amount of kids that would need them and how many devices we had available. So that's gone really, that's gone really well. So, and again, we don't know in the coming days, just to see if we, several schools have asked about second grade. So we'll see how many have rolled out and how many we have left. We'll check those numbers. She's having principals put those in every day.
They have to have a Wi-Fi connection?
Yeah, we did. You know, many of our students, we don't know, we'll find out how many actually don't have Wi-Fi. What we've told them with a Chromebook and the download that they receive, they can pull into any of our parking lots with their Chromebook and the kids can download their work. So if they can get, or any Wi-Fi outside a restaurant or anything like that, they don't even have to get out of their car. They could pull up to one of our schools and access the Wi-Fi in the parking lot. So then they can download the assignments if they can get there and go home. That's what we're looking at. How many kids has that, you know, affected? So we'll know those numbers and we, you know, can do something different for them, but we're hoping that people can have that access. We gave grade instructions, Kim developed grade instructions for the parents about that when they got home with the Chromebook so they could access that, those hotspots at our school if they need to, or the Wi-Fi at our schools, or Starbucks or McDonald's or wherever they can get to. And we will provide hard copies too. And there were several teachers today that provided hard copies for people that did not have access or chose not to take a Chromebook home, did not want to do that. So, you know, we talked to, you know, these, these two weeks. And right now, that's what we know about school closure for sure. That's what the governor's ordered. And so we talked to the principals right now just about making sure this is not punitive to a child's grade because of access issues, Mr. Hanson, that you just talked about, and just making sure that we're not giving a child zeros if they don't have access or they do not have a way to complete the work or whatever. So right now, they're expected to complete the assignments, but we are not being punitive with them if they don't. I think that's a conversation, if we miss more than two weeks, that will have to be revisited. And we're already talking about that and making plans for that. So it's kind of a grace before grades right now until we get devices and figure out who's able to complete. You know, we've got kids that are having to provide childcare maybe and, and different things. So we just want to see what's going on individually with that. And Dr. Nolte and I both felt strong about that. We have encouraged teachers to please provide feedback. Mostly what I hear from teachers are the kids are completing it, thinking, you know, I'm doing this work, this is, you know, I want to stay on, on top of this. And so anyway, we have asked them to reach out and give them feedback for that. And I think if, you know, if the school closure goes on, the guidance will change as of right now. The teacher, I talked to every principal today or went and met with them, and every principal felt very good about where they were and the teacher's able to put things on. Most teachers already use online platforms anyway, even our third grade. So they felt really good about that. They felt like their teachers were, had put assignments out and were ready to go. So everybody was positive about that. Said rate yourself from one to 10, and all of them were eight, nine, or they were already tens. So, yeah, I, I'm really proud of them and I just want to echo what Dr. Nolte said. We've seen some amazing things in really, really difficult times. And to think, this time last week, we had no idea this would be going on, how times changed. So when you see them out there, you brag on them and I know y'all will. And I just appreciate everything y'all have done to support us. What questions can I ask for you about academics?
Just one thing, like Mr. Hanson said, as long as we get that out to the public to let them know that, make sure they have the access, make sure they know to go to these access points if they don't have Wi-Fi, so.
Ms. Jackson, Kim Jackson actually also gave them a list, principals, that they communicated of all Wi-Fi spots that they could access and all the free offers for Wi-Fi being offered right now. So the principals had all that, that information too. Our curriculum, Kim Shipman, I, she blew me away. I think she stayed up 24 hours one night, but she created an eight-page document for principals, K-12, and it was all online resources that were vetted out and with our COPA agreement that we have. And so that was sent out too, to principals and teachers to use. So there's just been a lot of work done in a short amount of time. And they've done a good job with that. But we did communicate and we'll continue to do that too. And we may look at some other options on, further down if school closure forces us to stay closed for longer than expected.
And again, I applaud you too, y'all. You've done a fantastic job for the time limitations that you've had.
Well, thank you, thank you.
It's still a continual working process.
It is, changes every day.
Yeah, I, I can assure you.
Every, yeah.
I can assure you it will evolve. During our Sunday afternoon meeting, we literally received a message that will improve our second level of food distributions. We literally received a message from the state during that meeting that said, oh, you can do this and this now. So it will evolve. The state school board meets tomorrow. There is no telling what will come out of that meeting. And the governor will certainly have to tell us what he is thinking regarding the two-week period. And he'll need to tell us really pretty soon, even though we're just in a couple of days. Other questions for Jill?
I just want to make a comment. Jill, Jill Mann's doing her, on Facebook, her, the.
The announcement.
Data announcements. So I just thought that was pretty cool.
I'll tell her, she sent me a picture a minute ago. She, they're still at school, she and several schools.
I've been getting the announcements too, watching.
That's awesome. I will tell her, yeah, they.
I thought that was a good idea. I thought that was neat.
And I want to applaud, you know, Dr. Bill has stayed, I always tell him, he's, one of his strengths is staying calm. I can get a little wound up at times, but I've mended as I age, but he has, he has remained. He, and I think that carried over to our principals. They have done an outstanding job of just leading in a difficult and a hard time. And that stuff sometimes, and I, I just applaud them and keeping us calm and keeping us driven and focused too. So thanks y'all for everything.
The, the next area, and we just have really two more, and then we'll open up and talk about any number of things. But the next area is employee health concerns. And again, that is a couple-layered situation. We have talked, we've had state webinars, we've talked to state officials. My superintendent's meeting last Friday involved a couple of attorneys and other superintendents. And so Jason compiled a lot of that information and helped share that with principals on Monday morning. So Jason, I'll turn that over to you now.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the, the issue in dealing with chronic health conditions and leave has been a difficult one to sort out. You start out with the governor, the, the state superintendent of public construction and other folks who make very public announcements, trying to reassure the public that things will be okay and they should do those things, you know. But then as it filters down, people who are doing the administrative work has to figure out how to make that happen. One of the things that's confusing employees a little bit is the governor or, and I'm not trying to throw these politicians under the bus by any means, but they will make these generalized statements on the news and then when we get the guidance on what to do with it, it doesn't always match exactly. All right, so part of the confusion here is the governor will say that they recommend people work from a remote location. Further down in that statement and about the third paragraph, it will say, if possible, when you are, when the need for mandatory employment has served its purpose, which is what Dr. Nolte's been trying to say this week, is once he gets the supports in place, then we can look at that remote work and do that as soon as possible. But people generally just see on the headline, governor suggests people work remotely and they don't read any of the fine print of you've got to get supports in place and then do that as soon as you can later. So what they do say in those releases, and I can send those to you if you like, is that the superintendent does have the authority to make it mandatory for a short period of time to get things in place and then they can go to other remote work and that sort of thing. In the meantime, the guidance we've been given, and I understand Dr. Rogers' irritation with comparing it to a snowstorm, it, I don't think they meant to compare it that way as far as severity or the degree of, of how we should take this seriously. What they were trying to say was, is you would use the same procedures for leave that you would use in a snowstorm situation. If you're telling employees they have to come in, if they can't, then they just have to take their accumulated leave. And, and we have had about six employees who have voiced serious concerns about coming to work and we have told them all to stay home. We're not trying to force anybody to come to work. The only time we have asked for a doctor's note is when someone gives us a chronic health condition that the principal is not already aware of. If someone has had cancer treatments or something like that and they're at risk and the principal knows they've done that, then we have not sent them back to the doctor for anything. Anytime someone has come in with a new condition that we were not aware of and they haven't missed any time before in the past and we had no reason to know anything about, then we've asked them to just have a doctor fax us a note saying this person probably ought to stay home. And we've honored all those. Now, we have, you know, had to tell them that they have to take their accumulated leave because we have no other way to pay them right now. And that's toward the bottom of what Dr. Nolte released this afternoon is what the state told us was, is right now, tell them to use their accumulated leave. Later on, much, I think the better analogy would have been a hurricane. Down east, when they have a hurricane and someone's house gets totally wiped out and they cannot come to work, although other people are, it is not fair to charge them leave, but that's the only way to keep paying them for a short period of time. Then later on, once that crisis is over and the legislature meets and they possibly approve money to make that person whole and give them their leave back, then you can do that. And that's kind of what they were talking about this morning was, we think the legislature will do that once this is over, but we can't speak for them. But for the time being, if you have mandatory employees that you are saying, we need you to come into work and they refuse or they can't because of a health issue, then their only option right now is to take their leave. It could be given back to them in the future.
What I would ask Jason, if you would, keep kind of us posted on that situation so we as a board can take action to ask or plead or beg, borrow, or steal from our legislature to make sure that those folks are held harmless if, if.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and anything this board can do, from phone calls to letters to proclamations to whatever, we need to be able to do that.
And, and really, that needs to be communicated to teachers and staff. You know, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That puts a whole different spin on it.
I, I have a draft communication. I don't know if you want me to do it now, but I have a draft communication to staff tonight. And it is a draft because I wanted us to have this conversation before I sent it that I think will help them some. So I can, I can pull that up and read it now or later if you all want to.
Yeah, we'll do that.
It will?
I was going to say, let's finish these, then let him read that.
Okay. Okay. I'll butt it in on Jason.
No, no.
I want you to know that I, I feel very confident this board is going to support these employees.
Yeah.
As expressed earlier, so.
We will too.
Yeah.
But it may take unusual means to be able to accomplish a result.
I, I would hope that they would be more reasonable. Let's hope so.
Well, in everything, the governor has released, everything, the state superintendent, they all are, are saying, we want you paid. I think they will push the legislature to do that and I think they probably will. I don't, I don't think they'll be unreasonable people, but we just can't guarantee our employees right now, go on home and we'll make sure you get that money back because we just can't, we don't have that authority. And it sounds mean and, and, you know, coming from us that, well, you just got to take your leave. But we've been telling them, you know, hopefully the legislature will give this back to you. But if you can't come to work, we understand. We're not trying to make you do something you don't feel good doing. But right now, if you, to get a paycheck, you just got to take that leave and then hopefully you'll get it back in the future.
For some folks, it's compromised systems, it could be a, a major decision.
It could be, yeah. And there are.
Financial despair anyway.
Yeah.
Start making bad decisions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want that.
And there are people out there in, in compromised situations, health-wise, that don't have a lot of leave because they've had the health problem. And they've missed already. And, and so they're looking at taking leave without pay. And then when you get into that, you know, at some point, we could no longer pay for their insurance if they're off payroll. So, you know, it's a tough thing. And, and we don't, you know, we don't want anyone in that situation. So as soon as, as we can, as Dr. Nolte and y'all can make that decision to remotely work, then, then this part will go away for the most part. It's just in this short-term period while we're trying to get those supports in place that we needed everybody here.
One of the other provisions that we, again, did not want to articulate because, again, we, we didn't want to confuse people and we wanted, we wanted to put things in place that would run for a long time for our students. You will remember, and I can't remember the situation at this point in time, Jason may be able to remember it. There was a situation where we had missed a good bit. It may have been associated with one of the floods or a really bad snowstorm. There were provisions for some employees to actually make up time. And we talked about that as a board and so forth and so on. But what we did not want to do, and I think when we make employee assignment changes, I think then that will be pretty easy to put in place if people have lost time. But we didn't want to say that today and then we lose critical people that we're going to need for at least a couple, a day or two more, at least through the end of tomorrow because they're counting on making up time later. So there, there are lots of other things here. We're not trying to keep any secrets at all, but just trying our best not to confuse people and it, it's, it is a confusing time.
It is. Very good.
That's all I have unless y'all have questions.
The last area before we head up.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Jenny.
Yeah, Jenny, that was the last area before we head up, a, just a general discussion about a lot of things, was we've had a number of requests, and she and I, we've all given this same kind of sharing with central office staff and principals. We've had a lot of requests for people to help us. And what we have said to them, if it's an organization that wants to provide meals or supplies or materials, is please do that as much as you can when we cannot help. You know, let your church provide a meal on, on the weekend, or let your business provide supplies and materials off school campus. And we said that for the same reason that Dr. Rogers expressed earlier. We, we know that if there is an infection and that can be tracked back to a school-sponsored activity, the last thing we want is for that to have come from a third-party volunteer who was helping us. So one of the things that we have said to, to people who've offered to help is, yes, help. Provide food, give away supplies and materials, help people in any way that you can, but you, as much as you can, you need to do that as your business or your church. And, you know, don't, don't ask us to help you do that. And if you want to help us, call Jenny and then Jenny can tell you about that part of it.
Yeah, and so we've had so much community support. It's unbelievable. I've gotten two phone calls since I've been here tonight of, of people wanting to help. And we're just so thankful that we live in a community where they want children to be fed and, and teachers to have what they need. So I just want to say thank you on record for all that. So, you know, I want us to keep a. So, um, you know, I want us to keep in mind too that just like everything else, it changes every day and we don't know how long this is going to last. And so these are the, the things that we're asking right now, um, as, as we're moving forward on day two. Um, at this time, we don't need volunteers on our school campuses for this, what Dr. Nolte just said. Um, we appreciate it and it's not that we don't want them there, but we want to keep, as Mr. Dr. Putnam says, we want to keep our loop closes as much as we can. Um, we, we can accept monetary donations through the foundation and when we do that, we, we don't necessarily have a specific answer of how that money can be used right now. I can't tell them that we're going to use that on food today because I just don't know that yet. Um, we still don't know what our needs are and, you know, again, we're just on day two. We, we don't have those needs specifically right now, but we may have them on day 15. I don't know. You know, I'm just speculating through that, but, um, so we can accept the money and I will just put it in account and hold on to it until the needs arise. Um, again, none of the sites are going to be used as a distribution center for a third-party. And I know you guys are familiar with the Manna food packs that are delivered to the school campuses on Fridays. So I've been in contact with those groups who do that and Manna is looking, um, as far, when I got the email today, she was, um, had narrowed down two locations of where people can pick those, those bags up. Um, she hasn't gotten confirmation, so as soon as she gets that, and I get it, I will let our social workers and our guidance counselors know to, um, spread that out or get that information out as, as quickly as they can. Um, you know, they'll need to determine their own location, their own time, how to advertise it because we just can't, can't manage all of that. And, um, and that goes with the same, the same, I think there are some churches that also deliver to Pisgah and Meadowbrook on Fridays. And I've also been in contact with them and explained this to them. So they're looking for, um, maybe to have people come to their church, so. Um, the other thing is just, just as, um, that community organizations do not need to fundraise on behalf of the Haywood County Schools or Haywood County Schools Foundation right now. If that need arises, then we will, you know, we'll, we'll communicate that. And, um, we've also had people offer to, um, or want to use the buses to get out things to our community or to our students and we can't serve as a transportation support either for our community or, or community activities. So just, um, just those things, but just to keep in mind that as this changes, we will, um, you know, we'll, we'll have to, we might have to manage some things differently and, and look at some things differently, but it's the same kind of thing. So if you do get questions about what, how they can help or what they want to do, you can just direct them to me and I'm keeping a, a list of every person who has offered what they've offered, if it's on behalf of an organization and their contact information, um, if we need those in the future. And I've had no guidance on the calendar at this time.
Yeah, we'll talk about calendar and other events, whatever you all want to talk about in just a second.
I've got some names and stuff to give you, Ms. Jenny.
Okay.
Whenever we get there.
Um, I guess we can open the floor and talk about whatever we want to talk about. We did want to meet, uh, I can read this draft memorandum to, uh, school employees that I wanted to send after our meeting and we had a chance to talk. Certainly a lot of things that weigh on people's minds are, you know, what about the prom? Uh, what about the school calendar? Uh, what about graduation? Uh, what, what can you tell us about those things? And in all honesty, uh, the next thing that we will know probably, uh, is what the state school board tells us tomorrow. I think that will be mainly about testing, but I do not know that. Or I know certainly before next week is over, the governor's going to have to say something about, uh, the current closure of school for students and whether or not it is over or it is extended. I think most of us are guessing that it will probably be extended. Uh, but we do not have guidance on the calendar, uh, hours of instruction. Uh, we have received some guidance of, from, um, Chris and Dean in our superintendents meetings that we can, uh, have remote meetings of the board if we want to, especially after we get verified cases. And they've given us some guidance on that. So what, uh, what do you all want to talk about at this time?
I do, I do think that, uh, it would be in the board's best interest that we do either remote type board meeting, call-ins or whatever we can work, whether it's video or just audio, I think it'd be fine. But even tonight I was thinking that we, you know, we're just on the edge of being too many people here. I know y'all kept your distance and we kept our distance, but you know, we're nine and y'all about five or six, so. A social distance, that's right. You know, uh, going back to this, this discussion about the, the employees, I'd, I put the analogy of the floods that we had here, a lot of us were on the board at that time and Dr. Bill was on board at that time as well, but I remember FEMA coming into town and it was like, don't worry, we've got this covered, everything's going to be fine. And then you start reading the fine print, you know, and you find out, well, first of all, you've got to do the renovations or do the rebuilding and then we'll reimburse you and we don't have the money to be reimbursed. So it's the same situation you're talking about. You know, I, I was never so upset in my life as when we found out that, you know, here we've got all this devastated property. And yeah, we're going to take care of you, but oh, by the way, you're going to have to pay for it first. Now, later on, the legislature did come back and do a lot of grant work. And so we were able to get those reimbursements, but oh, by the way, you've got to put insurance on those buildings that you accepted money for. So there's a lot of strings attached to a lot of things, but hopefully this will pan out better than that, which did turn out pretty good. But, um, just an analogy to what Jason was talking about. It's frustrating.
I have one question. I got a call today. You're saying that we're, we're gonna eventually hopefully get teachers working from home?
I, I think that we'll know by tomorrow afternoon if we can do that immediately or if it's going to take just a little bit longer. Based upon what I did today was I, Jill said she'd spoken with every principal. I asked her earlier today to call every principal and tell us where they were in educational supports for stu-, uh, for students. And then, uh, so that's why she did that. She made extensive notes and reviewed those with me this afternoon. And then Trevor and I had also talked about where we were on our food distribution plans. And so I think, um, you know, best case scenario, we're changing some things at the end of this week. Um, and I, I think we'll have that best case scenario. Uh, again, I, I can't predict exactly what will happen tomorrow.
Well, the, the call that I got today was from a husband of a teacher. And he was ranting about, he was having to pay child support, childcare for his children and his wife's having to work. And is there any way that he could bring us, she could take the kids to school? And I said, well, that kind of defeats the purpose of not having school.
Yeah, I, I, I did, uh, talk to principals about that at some length.
I think it was putting the financial strain.
Yes.
Childcare's not cheap. I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure it is. I'm, I'm really worried about our classified employees that don't make
Not available for some.
I had a long conversation with principals on Monday morning. That's a decision that principals have always made, uh, when we've had snow days, uh, floods, um, hurricanes and things like that. Um, so I didn't tell them they couldn't do it, but I did tell them that under no circumstances would, did we need to have a lot of students at school. And if we had, uh, a, a healthy child there that the parent would need to be with them and be able to monitor them, that would not have been possible for a cafeteria worker today. I don't know what, uh, what the nature of the job description was for this husband. And then I reiterated some of the things that I said to them about no pseudo-practices and things like that. I said, the last thing we need is, uh, one of our athletic teams or performance groups to sort of all accidentally show up because their parent was at the school and practicing the gym. I said, mm-mm, can't do that. So, uh, I don't know that particular employee's group and probably don't need to, but we did talk to principals about being very, very careful with introducing a lot of people to campus.
Okay, I have, I don't have a question, I have a con-, a comment. I share Bobby's concerns and I appreciate him for sharing those for all of us because every one of us have those same, same questions, I think. However, um, I applaud every one of y'all. I applaud all the principals, all the teachers and every staff worker. Um, you know, it would have been easier to let fear take over and go hide, but if that had happened, none of this good work would have been going on. And we're hoping and praying that decisions turn out to be correct. And you know, I, I just appreciate it and, uh, I think it's outstanding leadership and hard work throughout and thank you.
Do you want to read the memo now?
I'm pulling her up right now.
All right.
Well, if I can remember.
It had to be public.
That's all right. Well, uh, that's all right.
I, I had planned to send this out. Brooke, uh, Brooke has approved it one time. Um, and, uh, I knew that we might be doing some editing, um, and we, you know, if we get it, uh, the way we want it, then we'll send it out, you know, shortly after the meeting. The first couple paragraphs are just really praises for the employees and I said those things right at the beginning of the meeting, uh, so excuse the redundancy in the first couple paragraphs. Um, but it just said, I want you, uh, to tell you how proud I am. Uh, you have risen to the occasion today. I and other system-level staff had the opportunity to see many of you at work by 5:00 PM you had, and it's the same things I listed with distribution of meals and Chromebooks and so forth. Um, some of this work is still going on this evening and will continue throughout the day tomorrow. In crisis situations like this, you can clearly see the true character of people. You are great people. Uh, you care about children learning and having food to eat. And then here's where it, uh, changes a little bit and I didn't say all these things quite this way during our meeting. Uh, many of you understand that we are working to put supports in place for students. We have just completed the first two days of a two-week closure, so we're really not very far in. Many of you, I didn't say that, that was an editorial comment, but we've just completed the first two days of a two-week school closure. Many of you have transformed educational delivery in your schools. At this time, we do not know how long we will be closed for students. The State Board of Education meets tomorrow. The governor will give us additional information regarding the, the length of school closures. When appropriate student supports are in place, we will consider working from home and other assignment adjustments for teachers and other employee groups. Unfortunately, most of our non-certified classified in parentheses employees cannot work from home and they will lose income if they do not work on-site. We need to remember and support these employees as we move through these most unusual times. We will provide additional guidance for you when appropriate student supports are in place for our 7,000 students across 15 schools. We ask for your patience, understanding and support. So certainly that's not perfect, but that's what we have to let them know that that was certainly on the table.
It's one thing, you've always been transparent this whole thing and your whole tenure so far, and that's great that our whole staff tell people what it is and keep them advised as much as we can and we've, and we've always done that and you've always done that and I, I like Burnett and them. We, we applaud you for doing that and I think it's a very good.
When, when you hired me, I told you I would try to be transparent and you all know I sometimes share too much. Truth be known, there are pockets of people in locations who are ready. Uh, the early college folks, this was a blip for them, but I did not know how to turn them loose, right? And not do it for other people. Uh, and then we have lots of individual high school teachers that this was not much of an adjustment. But across 7,000 students and 15 schools, it'll probably take us through tomorrow afternoon to really be ready. And that's been hard. Uh, the staff will tell you that we have agonized over that very, very much. Um, Jill came in this morning and she knew that I was really agonizing over this and some other things and she said, come here, we're going out to see people. And we did that really quickly. That was like, you know, three or four sites in less than an hour. Uh, but, uh, uh, we are very prayerful that this works out very well for us and, um, and we know it will not be perfect, but we have certainly tried to make, uh, um, good, to make good decisions and have supports in place and hopefully we can get some people off campus before we have, uh, verified infections.
Yeah, I was at some schools today too, so that's a good idea Jill, because I mean, just walked in, you just, wow. I mean, these people are just going, handing out stuff. Some guy come in and his roll back had big air horns on it. Some teacher's going out there and so here he was blowing his horn, letting them know, hey, I'm here to keep up, that's a, you know, a parent dedication to give their kids packets and I applaud the parents and the community too for stepping up, taking care of their children too, getting in there, getting their supplies and, uh, yeah. But that was, that was probably the most light in the flame this morning. That did say, all right, there's no use in stressing, look at these guys. They're doing a fantastic job, so.
It's been the, uh, that was the best part of the last four days, I can assure you.
Certainly.
If, if you look on, um, Annette Reneger's Facebook page from Clyde Elementary, she's got about 15 pictures on here.
They're taking pictures.
And it says 400 instructional packets, 120 Chromebooks checked out, 191 meals served to kids in our community with a heart. Uh, the light shines in darkness and the darkness can never extinguish it. Um, this is, although people didn't quite understand, this is what Dr. Nolte's talking about. Other than the meals being prepared by the cafeteria staff, all of that, all these people in these pictures are teachers that are checking out the Chromebooks and handing out the meals and doing all that stuff. And once that gets done in the next day or so, then we can move to those other remote work type questions. So this is kind of what we were trying to do to begin with. Thank you.
I've got a, a question, Jill, um, maybe for the educational instruction part of it. Um, if we do start missing more weeks or, you know, we've got, lost a look at about spring break and whether we're going to take spring break or we're, we're going to include it with some of these weeks that we're missing. If it gets to the point, um, is the state, you said the state's meeting tomorrow to talk about maybe integrate tests, i- is there a possibility that those may be waived and just let the teachers give assessments based on what they were capable of teaching those kids and what, you know, weeks we have left and?
I am seeing, I saw Tennessee where they were going to apply for a waiver. It's actually through the federal government to, um, you know, in regards to the accountability model that, that we have with the federal governments where that model comes from through our state. So they were going to apply for a waiver. I do see, I mean, I can't predict the future. I don't, I don't know, but, um, I could see that definitely if we missed, just looking at for flexibility.
If we're still looking at doing the, the integrated test, that's putting a tremendous stress on teachers to try to, hey, we've still got all of these, these units that we got to get through for the kids and then that puts stress on the kids. So, you know, would it help if our school district sent something to the, to the state saying that, you know, is there a way to do a waiver of, of the EOGs for the, for this calendar year and just do a, a, in the class assessment?
I think so. I think after tomorrow, I, I feel like they're going to address that tomorrow. I think they've got a lot of pressure to, you know, teachers need to know they have EVOS ratings and, I mean, they're very nervous about it. And also it's hard to hold ki-, kids accountable when they're not, you know, in front of you. We're in a whole new world. So, um, we'll see about that, but maybe, and I mean, that would be up to Dr. Bill, but I definitely think that's something we're going to see some changes. And as far as like advanced placement testing, I'm getting updates daily about that from the college board. We've got kids in AP classes that take national tests on a certain day. I'm getting updates daily about that from the college board. We've got kids in AP classes that take national tests on a certain day. And so that is, we, I got noticed today that they're preparing online lessons to, that kids can access, like national lessons. Our teachers are doing a great job with that too, but still I think they said they would let, like in another week, they would give us additional guidance just on advanced placement testing. So I think we'll know more in the coming days depending on the closure, but I think it's a very legitimate concern.
I think so. Carolina's doing that as well. They're applying.
I think as a board, you probably should act if we do not get action tomorrow from the state school board. Uh, the other thing too, again, and I talk too much, I'm sorry about that, but right now we have told our folks that we want a good educational supports and experiences in place for people. And, and we anticipate that the board might waive those assessments. If they don't, Jill's already mentioned that we'll have to change our approach a little bit and try to, especially for younger students, make it more intense instruction. So we're, we're at their mercy, but.
What kind of flexibility do we have as a local district to be able to, to do some waivers there? Is that, is that all state mandated and we, we have to?
Yeah, unfortunately, yes. As Jill mentioned, there are state, there are federal assessment measures. Those are typically in reading and in math. And what the state does is they get their, each state gets their plan approved and includes other assessments that the feds don't require, some, some of the science things. And, and some other things. So that is, I think we could say that we're going to waive it or we would like for them to waive it, but they have those, that authority at this time.
Thank you.
Do I get my 10 minutes now? I hadn't said nothing all night.
Three minutes.
I hadn't said nothing all night. Can I get 10?
Two minutes.
Two, okay. Thank you all for what you've done and thank you for Mr. Francis for this little meeting. I'm not really a type of person to read anything. I'm still a face-to-face person, so I guess this coronavirus has put me at odds with doing what I do, but one question or when you was talking about the non-certified employees, are you looking at, are they going to be a lot if we go for two weeks, which? Yeah, going for two weeks, are you looking for all those employees, are you going to be able to put them in place for two weeks? Or are you looking at percentages not? Because if not, that's where we don't need to really wait on the state to take care of those people. We need to make sure we take care of those hourly employees.
The short answer is yes, we will take care of a lot of that. I don't know that we can promise every single person, every single hour. And I'll let Trevor elaborate on all the things that we already have planned to do that.
Well, that's all right. I, that's all I need to know. I don't need to know the plans as long as we know that you've got something working on me, myself. And also my son wants to know, since it's like a virtual reality school, that he's doing his school online, all that stuff, what kind of trouble can he get into? Is it like a virtual reality timeout? Or is it like a suspension from virtual reality?
I think he'll be fine. I think he'll be fine if your wife helps him.
Yeah. I'm telling you, I mean, he, here's my son. The, the, they're, they're sort of excited about doing all this, but that's the first thing he's, he asked was like, what, what kind of trouble am I going to get into if I get in trouble when I'm on virtual reality or whatever? I'm like, your mama might whip your butt.
Yeah, I, I'd ask her if she'd be in charge of that.
But thank you again for what you've done.
That'd be IHS in-house suspension or OHS outside the house. That's what we're talking about.
Let's talk about calendar for a minute, just on the side of transparency. You know, we know, and I hope I wrote this down right, we, we know the next two weeks are going to be in the books. If we were to go back after two weeks, which is probably unlikely at this point, that'll leave us a week before a scheduled spring break. So what were you at? Just because parents are going to have to plan.
Right. What I have said to people who have asked me that question is the, the board changes the calendar, all right, you know, below what, you know, the state or federal government requires, but the board changes the calendar. However, as a superintendent, I would not recommend taking that spring break at this time. I, I'm like you, I don't think I'm going to have to worry about that. I think, I think somebody else or conditions at the time will take care of that for us. But if, if, if we are allowed to go back to school after the first two weeks, then that will be a good discussion we'll have on April the 2nd. And my recommendation at this time would be not to take the spring break away from plans that students and staff might have. Again, that's just a recommendation and who knows what's going to happen between now and then. We may not even need to discuss it.
Well, gi-, given that, so now let's talk about hours of instruction, blah, blah, blah. Are we expecting waivers in addition to the waivers that we have?
We.
Are we extending the school year to June, uh,
Yeah.
35th or whatever?
Well, it's, it's, it's like a lot of other things right now. We can't guarantee that the state legislature or the state board, if the state legislature gives them the authority to act for them, we cannot guarantee that they would modify instructional hours, but we believe that they will. So right now we have to act as if they might not do that, but think that they will. They have waived hours of instructions for hurricanes and other situations. And the unofficial word that we get from people connected to the legislature is that they are, they have that under strong consideration. So I, we think they'll do that. We can't certainly speak for them. We think they'll make a modification to those hours.
Well, and see, that's, that drives me right back to the whole
Yeah.
categorization. If they hadn't have called this instructional, we could have made some good assumptions if it had been infectious disease, natural disaster. We've got some things we can look back on, but because they're calling it instructional, it, it, it just clouds everything. You tell it bothers me a little.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, Dr. Rogers, I can tell that it's upset you pretty bad.
Well, and, and I don't like to say this a lot, but trust me, I understand. I've had some of those same frustrations. We've probably articulated them a little bit differently, but I've, I've had some of the same concerns about that. When, when Jason and Leanna, they both attended or participated in the webinar, listened to the webinar because it was information from both of their state departments and when they came in to brief me earlier today and they both told me that, I'm like, what? But again, that's what it said, so we were trying to share that with people so they would know what we had just heard.
Well, that's my whole point is I'm not firing it. You guys have done a great job considering the situation and trust me, I, I believe that. It's just, you've, you've been put behind the eight ball making decisions that you don't know how people in legislatures are going to rule in the end. It, it puts you out on limb.
That's the problem too. Nobody knows because the legislature hasn't done anything yet.
But if they'd have made a good decision upfront.
Yeah.
Instead of a knee-jerk reaction.
Yeah. It would have been nice. It's like that fellow said, we can vote all day, but it won't count. This board can vote all day, but it won't count on that issue.
That's right.
We can certainly voice our opinion and we certainly will. And so I think that's, that's key. Yeah, we, we, we preach to our principals pretty regularly that they have a responsibility to lead. And so we try to model that. Sometimes when we do that, you know, we, we run into things that aren't comfortable, not from you guys. You guys have always been very, and Ms. Barrett, you, you as board members have always been very, very supportive. But we believe that we should act the, the best that we can on what we know at the time. And the people in this room are the folks that I directly supervise in our office and so we do try to act and then take responsibility for our actions, whether they turned out well or not.
Can I say a word?
Sure.
I just want to tell y'all how thankful we are to have such a good staff that we have. I know these are tough decisions for y'all to make, but we know y'all will make the right decisions and that's all we, and for our children in our school systems and everything, and that's all that matters to us.
Very good. Thank y'all for the update. I sure appreciate it. Thanks for meeting so quickly and bringing us up to speed and I, I think the, the fact that we waited till we could get some things, see what happens, it, it helps the fact that we have more information to be shared with us tonight. Any questions?
Mr. Smithers, you got anything? You been off of Clyde?
Yeah. When's the baby? When you going to be a granddaddy?
Very soon.
Very soon.
Very soon. I, uh.
Well, thank you for what you do.
There, there's a lot of stuff that I'm, I'm getting from.
You might want to get a microphone so they can, if you're going to make a comment.
I am, I am receiving stuff probably on the hour, every hour from anyone from the North Carolina School Boards Association to fellow attorneys, to, to the listserv, to various and sundry organizations are all involved in this, from health organizations to education organizations, state organizations. And really and truly, what I'm hearing, I don't see any legal issues that are coming up that aren't this staff and this board's not covering. And actually, I was just flipping through and trying to get the latest numbers on the, the virus in North Carolina. It's actually just said, the News and Observers reporting 65 at this point in time is the high. And they were just talking about the schools in, in the Raleigh area, what they're doing to feed the children and how they're addressing things, but yeah, I get these things. As I said, I've been getting things on, on an hourly basis on the internet and, and I I read some of the stuff I already know, but the, the things I'm seeing going are just right on point with what I'm, the precautions that they're saying take and the things to do and not do, so that's why I'm quiet. I don't have anything to add.
Thank you.
Let's go home.
Thank you.